Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the November seventh, twenty twenty-two, six P M regularly scheduled school committee meeting, call the meeting to order. It is six P M. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped this evening, and I would ask that everyone please rise for my allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We will go with a roll call this evening, and Sam, if you'll start us up, please.
Hi, I'm Samantha Velasquez, Secretary.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Sarah Trillo.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Avery Thompson.
Antonella Rochella.
Amy Delanta.
Heather Brown, Director of Curriculum.
Molly Riley, your representative.
Okay, thank you all. We have minutes for approval this evening.
He's gonna welcome Molly.
Oh, yes, we have a new student rep this evening. We have Molly Riley. Molly, take her in here tonight. And I will look for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Move to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amy. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are.
Those in here.
You'll abstain?
Yeah.
Aye?
Yep.
Those opposed, nay? And one of session, so that carries three to zero to one of section, please. Okay, and one more, please.
Move to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Okay.
Second by Amy. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
And I understand.
And one of section, so that carries three to zero to one. Thank you. Committee and subcommittee communications, we want to start ourselves tonight, please.
Sure. Um, I made it out to a few of the athletic events that have been happening um as the fall seasons have come to a close. I made it to a football game, um, a JV, and then a varsity soccer game, and a lot of the teams had really strong showings into the postseason, and some are continuing on, so wish them the best of luck.
I believe we have a game tonight.
Yes, I think the boy soccer.
Yeah.
Oh, they're still in?
I think they was in Milton they were going.
Yes, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Sweet.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, they're going there.
I might be at a neutral site. I'm not sure about that, but but they're not here, I don't believe.
No, nobody's there.
Yeah.
Great. Antonella.
No, I don't have anything.
Amy.
Um, since the last time we met, I attended another um Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative Meeting. Um, they had a few things to report. They had a couple issues of vandalism, so they spent quite a while talking about some of the issues they had, I believe, with some buses or such, um, so they, that was a concern, and they had some ideas for how they were gonna, um, you know, solve some of those issues. Um, they talked about some of the um positive feedback that they've received recently from some of the um pay that they've given to teachers for COVID relief type of stuff, so they've given um some of their teachers who worked additional hours during COVID, some relief pay, and I I guess obviously that was very well received, so that was another kind of hot agenda item during that meeting. Um, so the next meeting's in a couple weeks, and I'll report.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Molly, do you have anything?
Um, I thought Ohio hosted their yearly um college fair last week, which was very well representative. A lot of students went, and it was a good time. First time we've had that back since COVID.
You over a hundred colleges?
It was just shy of a hundred.
Shy of a hundred, yeah. That's pretty cool.
That's great.
Yeah, it's really cool.
It's like.
Working on timeframe, right? Isn't that right? Just because uh we know it's tough to squeeze in in the timeframe, but
Hmm.
They come and they visit a few different schools during the week, um, and so I think it's right now been sort of luck of the draw. We haven't been able to dictate timeframe.
Yeah.
We'll keep negotiating.
Yep.
Good.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you, Molly. Okay, opportunity for visitors to address the committee. We have no one in attendance tonight, so we will move right along. By point one, we have Eastland Middle Post Schools Fall Status Report.
Hey. In your packets and on your screens and soon on the big TVs behind us uh and in front of us, we'll have um our Fall Status Report, and so this is a combination of bringing together not only state data, but also achievement data from um our eye-ready assessments, and then uh at the beginning of it, um our social and emotional and climate surveys of students, and then in our youngest grades, responses from uh teachers in terms of how they observe students over the last month, two months actually now, and put it all together and give it, give us an idea where we are as a district. Uh, just a quick um uh setup in terms of how to look at the Panorama data. Answers are always in the favorable status, so when you get to situations where they might um ask a question about how excited you are to going, about going to class, they're gonna give you the percentage that's favorable if you look at, just in this one example, um with forty-five and percent, giving you the eight-one percent. We get to some of the questions, I'll highlight that again, just so that it makes sense when we're looking at things like challenging feelings and so. So this up on screen here is coming from our K through two teachers and how they're looking at uh their students as they've begun the school year, and then on the side, on the right-hand side, it gives you how um is up or down from what was seen at the end of the school year last year. So obviously, we would expect to be down a little bit, but a little bit excited about the fact that they're seeing emotional regulation um up around eighty percent. Uh, that I thought was a a good, good number, even though it's down only um five points from the end of the year, how they saw their students last year. Uh, we're down ten from where students were at the end of the year in social awareness. So that's a number, obviously, we'd like to see higher, and then numbers that we really need to work on as we go through the year um our effort engagement specifically, because you're looking at, they're seeing that at around fifty-eight percent, self-management and self-perspective. You know, self-perspective is something that uh we're working now as we do community circles um throughout all of our elementary buildings, and so that's um something that hopefully they're gonna be getting in throughout the year, almost on a daily basis. Will be good skills to have.
This is from what teacher perspective?
Social perspective. I shouldn't say self-perspective, I apologize.
This is the teacher.
These are teachers, K through two, observing their class and then responding to the survey.
And you, that makes sense, then, why it would go down from last year, because at the end of the year is after all the work we've been doing, right? And now we're starting fresh again, and the summer, the beginning, the little ones. But it's still concerning, but
Yeah.
Some of the numbers, sure, but.
So we anticipate we're gonna do this again at the end of the year?
Do it uh two, two times, yeah.
Numbers would be.
Two more times, where, where, yeah. We'd like to see the numbers higher each time.
To focusing on a lot of these things.
Right.
Yeah. How far does second step go up in the grades?
Yes.
Yeah.
In our district.
Then as you move to the next uh one, three through five, now this is a survey where students are responding, and again, they're still looking at um where we may have been and how students responded, even though they've now advanced the grade uh at the end of last year, and so even though it's down a one point, we're excited to see that still we're students in three through five are seeing that they have supportive relationships, ninety-one percent. That's ninety-nine percentile uh when compared with how students across the nation have responded. Um, we're also excited to see school climate and school safety um in the eighties. We'd like to see school safety um up a little higher than eighty-two percent. That's about the same as where it was. Um, and just a little bit about climate actually has more of the uh the climate questions have more of not only about positive school climate, but also that I feel safe, I don't feel like I would be attacked at school. School safety tends to have more of the bullying questions, um, just in terms of identifying how questions align underneath, whether it's school climate or school safety. Areas where, when we were talking earlier around um the fact that we're always reporting this in sort of the favorable statistics, um, obviously, it makes sense when you look at positive feelings, seventy percent, we'd like to see that higher. But then you have the category of challenging feelings, and this is, it's sixty-eight percent of students reporting that they're not experiencing challenging feelings. However, obviously, you'd like to see a higher percentage there, and these are feelings like frustration and anger um and feelings that obviously can be really not, no pun intended, challenging um uh and can cause people to be off-tasked to possibly act out and so forth, and so these are things that we need to be aware of and work towards helping students solve. Um, rigorous expectations and engagement, uh our percentages are lower there, and we're gonna go into some more detail on that um just to give you an idea of what that means, but before going there, and um Ms. Brown's gonna take us and take us into some more detail on that. Just interesting, as you look at some of these percentages, um obviously, the school climate and the supportive relationships, very exciting to see, positive feeling seventy percent. It was interesting, um, the conference I attended uh last week had some percentages for adults, and so adults, and these were relatively recent surveys, still adults are reporting um fifty-five percent of women and thirty-eight percent of men um who participated in this survey reported that they're still having some type of mental health impact from the pandemic. Uh, and the hardest-hit age group of the respondents was eighteen to twenty-nine, which is really interesting. That's not a age group that, at least I would have thought, would have been the most impacted by the pandemic, but um their percentages of feeling as though there's still something that they're, they're need, they need to work through um from the pandemic is, are higher than, say, the age spans when you get to thirty to forty-nine or fifty and above. Uh, and so that was interesting. So the students aren't really far off from where adults are reporting.
Mm-hmm.
And and so that's just something we need to keep in mind. It's also something we need to keep in mind, because as a school community, we have students and we have adults. So everyone needs to be thought in terms of how, thought of in terms of how we support, so that's really important.
Before I go into the the rigorous expectations and engagement, I also want to point out that the survey does two things for us. Obviously, we can look at trends and as, you know, as a district, as school-wide MTSS teams can really dig into this data, but also on the dashboard, we get information about kids and what they've reported in terms of their positive and challenging feelings and supportive relationships. So if we have students who are reporting um less favorably, we can check in with them, we can, you know, make sure they're getting the SEL supports, the extra supports. Obviously, we have tier-one SEL, but there's extra supports that they might need, so it's just another tool for the MTS team to use um that, you know, brings more than just the academic data. So, sorry.
I was just gonna, students take this during the day?
And it really take, it's about ten minutes. It's, it's
And they all do it.
Yeah, uh, we have always better response rates, you know, the lower grades, um, and then as you get into the high school, um, it gets a little harder to get them all, but we are doing different things to try to, to get folks to, to.
Working on fidelity.
Yes.
Responses and sincerity.
Yes. Well, and I think it's just, yeah, just doing it, right? So, um, but for the most part, I would say we have really good responses. I wanted to just point out for um the question here, this one is um rigorous expectations. It's, it's um the only question that we asked on rigorous expectations was this, when you feel like giving up on your schoolwork, how likely it is that your teachers will ask you to keep trying? And so the way Panorama um basically gets this average is not at all like uh extremely likely gets five points, quite likely gets four points, someone likely gets three, blah, 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 and it gets averaged, but you know, if you're thinking about third through fifth grade, somewhat likely is obviously not as great as we'd like to see with quite likely and extremely likely, but it just kind of goes to show you that, you know, if you look at it in in this format, you get a, a, a better picture of, of what kids are thinking and in terms of the Likert scale.
You have eighty.
You have like eighty-two percent of kids who are saying this for the three to five.
And we have to start thinking about the ones who are feeling like their teacher would not ask them.
Right.
And and dig into sort of the why, but that's a smaller percentage, still a percentage, eighteen percent, something we need to really look at.
And then uh the next one for uh engagement, the question was, how often do you get so focused on activities in your classes that you lose track of time? And so obviously, we're excited about the frequent and almost always. Sometimes is not terrible, because we want the kids to have that, that experience, and so um you know, we, we sometimes think too about how we ask these questions and do eighth, third graders know what we mean by lose track of time and things like that, but um I just wanted to break it out in this way so that you could see um, you know, with that extra thirty-two percent, we have more kids who are saying sometimes and up the other way around.
Where do we get the questions? How do we?
So some of these questions are created by Panorama, and that's when you can get the national norm, and then sometimes we've created our own questions because often with the younger kids, when the question's the way that they're asked in Panorama, the teachers have responded that the kids don't really know what we're saying, or they overthink it, or so um we have kind of tweaked some, it allows you to customize yours. The only issue with that is then you can't compare it to the national norm, because obviously, it's not the same question being asked cross-nation.
So that's the one, that, those are the ones that don't have to compare to the national.
These are a couple of them. Um, we go back. Um, the school climate, school safety, rigorous expectations and engagements, engagement, because the other ones are really from their um standardized well-being survey. So they'll see like the ones that have the national percentile.
We've also added some questions.
Right.
Um, particularly around bullying.
Mm-hmm.
For start of this.
How many questions on the survey?
Uh.
How many questions?
Yeah.
Roughly.
Um, got one here, about thirty-five, and it says that survey is estimated to take twelve minutes to complete.
Is it paper?
How fast?
It's on the computer, be online.
Twelve minutes?
Yeah, pretty accurate.
Okay, nice.
We gotta keep it short, sweet.
Like when we did it in Spartan Block last year, Spartan Block was twenty-five minutes at most, and it did not take anyone near the whole block, so.
This year, did it?
Did it during D Block.
D Block.
The last ten to fifteen minutes, and I got it done.
Trying to couple it with the PSAT, but that didn't seem to work.
Yeah.
And out of time.
Right? And we have the six to twelve, where we ask a few more uh and additional questions, between five.
So in six through twelve, we added the diversity and inclusion, well, actually, Panorama um had a bet, and um one of the things that we're excited to see is that uh we're seeing ninety-one percent, um, which is up even from last year at the end of the year, where, you know, we've done a number of things at that point during the year. Just to continue our work in terms of understanding diversity, being inclusive, making sure that our students all feel like they belong. That's such important work. I think we've tried to, but we need to continue to take more strides and make sure that the message is, is understood and being um embraced by all.
The question is simply, my school is inclusive of all backgrounds and identities, so.
And then supportive relationships, we're excited to see that uh we're staying at eighty-eight percent like that to go higher, that still is around the ninety-ninth percentile, um, but it didn't really change from last year. Uh, and again, school safety and school climate are in the eighties, I mean, like, like those to go up, although they both boosted from last year at the end of the year, so that's good to see. Um, cultural awareness, also up from here, so that was good to see, and then positive feelings and challenging feelings, although positive feelings, sixty-five percent, that's something we want everyone to obviously uh experience in terms of positive feelings throughout the week, and that's um high in the national percentile, but we'd like to see that higher. And then we'd like to see certainly um not a higher group reporting that they're not experiencing the challenging feelings. Um, and so those are things that we certainly have to continue to dig into, where the MTSS work is gonna become so important in just supporting our students, and then we'll break down further as we did before, the rigorous expectations and engagement.
Was this the first time rigorous expectations and engagement was on here?
We, the first time we asked these particular questions.
Okay.
Engagement was asked in a different way, and I don't even know if we did rigorous, we keep trying to tweak this to get the information that we need, um, and so, yeah, so the engagement was different, the way we asked it was the way Burchland asked in an internal survey, the lost in your learning.
Yeah.
And then the rigorous expectation was this one about teachers encouraging them to keep trying.
Is there a reason why we do six through twelve, and we don't break it down to like six through eight to nine through?
So you can break it down, how many, honestly, you can actually break it down grade by grade, school, um, you can break it into um you can disaggregate it by groups, um, and so that's when the MTSS teams can really kind of dig in, see you know, who is it who's actually responding this way?
That's why I would want to know, is it more the high school kids, or is it more middle school kids that are feeling?
Well, is that?
Challenging.
Are three-quarters saying they're not engaged? Is that, is that what I'm?
Well, that's why it's a little misleading, so if you go how uh if this one to the, the focus, you've got twenty-two percent saying frequently, five percent saying almost always, and then forty-three percent saying sometimes. So that can be challenge, you know? But it, but the way Panorama looks at sometimes is it's considered not favorable. So it doesn't count, because it, it's not neutral, it's actually not favorable, so that average can be a little misleading, because a lot of times with Likert scales, they say, don't average everything together. You really want to kind of see where people respond and where they fall.
Because these are the options they have for a response.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. But is this the only question that was under the engagement?
Yes, and so the other issue is we want to ask multiple questions for each section.
Right.
But then we have to keep it so that the high school kids halfway through won't go, forget this.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so.
And I would say not just high school, but middle schools.
Yeah, yes, right. Yeah, and I don't mean it in a bad way.
Cause they're not.
I've been in the middle of the survey, and after they asked me so many questions, I kind of just stopped.
Right.
So.
The threshold.
Yeah.
It is constantly, we at each year, we consistently look at the questions, and we go back and forth with Panorama to figure out what's gonna work to try to get this information, um, and we're particularly interested in engagement, um, and actually, that's been somewhat the focus of our um leadership team as we've gone on to two schools so far, uh, Burchland and the high school, and specifically discussed what would student engagement look like, how would it be defined, and at the high school, uh, we had the opportunity to bring students in prior to going out to um look at classes and observe classes for a little bit, uh, and it was really interesting to hear from the students how they saw student engagement and what they felt would be positive and good student engagement. Um, even more interesting in going out with them and observing classes and then coming back and hearing some of their feedback. Alright, so that's something that um we're gonna be in all five schools as a full leadership team. If, when we finish that, we can coordinate that, we're, we're doing it also with a facilitator from CLEET. Maybe we can continue some of that into the spring, because I'd love to at least lap again uh with the whole leadership team and hear from the high school students again, just to see where we were maybe in February, March, um, how they're still seeing student engagement and, and where they are in their studies and what they see. Anyway. All right. Ms. Brown?
No. I mean, that's the whole point, right, is to try to figure out what's going on, then dig into possible reasons, and then you know, try, and we get, we actually, when we went through the MTSS training with CLEET last year, one of the things we looked at was the Plan Do Study Act cycles, you know, we look at this information, we try to figure out maybe uh what is causing it, come up with some sort of solution, see how it works, and it's these smaller cycles. Um, and so that's what the MTSS teams are really designed to do, and, you know, and see what, what is it exactly, and I think having student voice is
Huge.
the best way to find out what we need to do better, especially for the older kiddos.
And so now we're shifting from the survey, and we're starting to take a look at some of the state data, some that was um, obviously, achievement data, which you'll see in later slides, but this is just a breakdown of demographics, which uh is coming from what we report to the state, but it's interesting how this year they put together um a little bit more comprehensive slides that we could use for presentations like this, and just some things to point out. Um, first, as you look up at enrollment, we're continuing to grow. Uh, so, and we're bouncing back, twenty-twenty, we had uh two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight students, and now we have two thousand five hundred and forty-four students, and if you look at twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, um, you know, we were, we were down significantly, but we're continuing to bounce back and grow, and that's exciting. Uh, we're also became, continuing to become more diverse as a student body. Uh, as you look, you can see some of the larger groups, subgroups that have broken out um over the uh probably the last five years, our uh Latino and Hispanic group has grown considerably, it might be considered the fastest growing. If you go back to twenty-seventeen, that was a percentage of around five-point-seven percent, and now at eleven percent. Um, and so, you know, we're growing in uh as a student body um and gaining diversity, which is really exciting. Uh, we're also, uh, as you look, you see most of the areas are compared over three years, but you look at that low income and you see one bar with a twenty-eight percent. That's because last year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education redefined how they were looking at what used to be considered um a group called economically disadvantaged, and what they did is they took the federal poverty level and they said any um individual that would be categorized at a hundred and eighty-five percent of the federal poverty level below that, that level, um, they would be designated into this group. If we take a family of four, the federal poverty level is around twenty-seven thousand dollars. If you put the hundred and eighty-five percent on it, that's just under fifty thousand dollars. Um, so you're looking at a family of four that uh might be trying to survive in roughly fifty thousand dollars, and so that's where um, Desi redefined this, this subgroup, and you can see, obviously, where we are at least coming out of last year, and under the high-needs group, where you're seeing some growth, uh, what we need to remember is that high needs is made up of uh the subgroups of students with disabilities, low-income students, and ELL students, it's really the three that they then break out to the side. So you're seeing some growth in high needs, you're also seeing uh that we have a, a pretty um substantial percentage in the low-income group. These are all things we need to um make sure that we're paying attention to and focusing in on, um, because you'll see as we start to break out the achievement data that it matters.
Gordon, can I just add a comment? As uh Lori Paul, our food service director, actually just gave me her October report for food service, which is where the low income and, you know, all, all of that data um is kept, and October's thirty-two-point-six percent, um, so that's an accurate, actual percentage for uh free and reduced.
And reduced.
Yep. We have about fifty-eight percent participation in the school lunch program. I just figured I'd throw that out there while I'm, you guys were talking about that, um, because she just gave me that.
So moving on to.
To get, yeah. Come back to that. Go back to that. So, folks are still um
Free.
Reporting free and reduced, even though we're still free.
It's important that we still report them, so yes, everybody, no one is paying for a school lunch, but we are still classifying, and it went back to the two thousand nineteen year, but now we're asking folks to, to submit. Um, so they, they do this process called direct certification, and it, it happens automatically behind the scenes when folks are getting different types of assistance um through this darn pandemic, and it's, you know, been life-changing for a lot of folks and needing some help. Um, so Lori Paul would go in like quarterly and, and get, so we don't have to ask those uh families for free and reduced lunch applications. It happens behind the scenes, it's, it's all confidential, um, but it does, you know, it gives them uh benefits, such as the free and reduced lunch could perhaps help with athletic fees, could help with transportation fees, those types of things, so um they've recently, uh, the, the government has recently, or I guess the state recently changed that, where they're trying now that the pandemic has, you know. recently changed that where they're trying now that the pandemic has, you know, hopefully getting past us and things are getting back to somewhat normal. Um, they've, they've done a new, uh, research, direct certification list. A lot of families have fallen off. Some families have come on, but a lot of changes have just happened. So, um, yeah.
Good.
So moving into, um, a little bit more of an assessment or achievement summary. Again, it gives you that look at three years. You're seeing that, um, we are starting to bounce back a little bit. Um, but more so, which was interesting to the, us as a leadership team, more so in math right now. Um, we're seeing literacy not bouncing back as quickly in terms of our scaled scores and so forth. And math and science seem to still be somewhat of our strengths. Say, science continues to be a strength because we've seen that in years past. Uh, math was somewhat of a surprise to see that as the scaled score that actually started to notch ahead and get close to the twenty nineteen levels again. And you're seeing that both, uh, in the three through eight and the grade ten, uh, summary. So it's, that was, uh, something that of note anyway to us as we continue to dig into this information. And then breaking it down, um, by subject. This, I thought this was, uh, the state created these charts, so we, uh, share these because they've, you know, just a different look at things. Breaking it down by grade level, you're seeing some, um, really good achievements, uh, by certain grade levels as they continue to bounce back. You know, you're seeing, um, grade three starting to show, um, some achievement and gains again. Uh, grade five, grade six and so forth. But also as we were talking about how our enrollment, um, is, um, diversifying and we know that the high needs group was growing. Um, you know, we need to look at that high needs group. We're seeing, um, somewhat of a decline there in the ELA achievement. And so that's something that, uh, it's good for us to see. It's good for us to start to break down and figure out how we support better. Flipping the page to math. See where some of these, uh, uh, jumps in terms of the aggregate scout score happens. You're seeing, you know, again, grade three, grade four, five, six, all had, um, scaled scores that were higher than last year and, um, showing some good achievement. Uh, and then grade ten also, uh, higher in scaled score than last year.
What's the fourth column, Gordon? The twenty-two, twenty-two number included, what does that mean?
Number of students.
Number of students.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Um, here, we also saw our high needs, um, uh, achieve higher in a scaled score than, uh, last year. And we're seeing, um, ELL students and former ELL students achieve higher, uh, which is something that was, uh, really exciting to see. And our students with disabilities also had an increase. So math really, uh, was an area of a lot of positive, uh, for us. And then science, um, just one thing to note, uh, the nice thing about science is that there's, it's sort of a double-edged sword. A nice part of the, of that is the fact that it is definitely a cumulative situation of all the teaching of, um, classes going from say, grade five through eight, when they take it again. Um, all the classes going into grade five and then, uh, obviously the 10th grade becomes very content specific. So to see that, um, not only in grade eight, they achieved, uh, a better scaled score than twenty twenty-one. Also achieved a better score than twenty nineteen through pandemic. That was exciting to see. Um, and so it continues to be an area of strength and it's one we can celebrate, uh, with a number of grade levels because they're all feeding into that, which is, uh, exciting. We broke out, um, on this next one, the growth data just a little bit because we heard, uh, one, we hit our, our growth goals for the most part, um, which was exciting to see, but it was also really good to see how, um, high the percentages were in say that very high range and in that high range as well. Um, I mean, if you look at grade five on this, they have thirty-seven percent in the very high area of growth, which was really exciting. And then if you jump up to grade four, you're seeing, you know, seventeen percent and fourteen percent in the high and very high, which is good, and it's something that certainly contributed to us hitting our, um, our growth goals. Uh, remember we were looking for to maintain that growth for grade levels and aggregate, uh, between forty and sixty. And if you look at the bottom there, you're seeing forty-eight and sixty-four as the mean SGP, which, um, was, was nice to see. And flipping this, I see, uh, six, seven, eight and ten. And again, you're seeing some pretty good percentages in that very high. Grade seven in particular has twenty-nine percent there. Um, grade six, twenty-four percent and grade eight, twenty-three percent. Where at grade ten, you're still seeing some pretty good percentages, um, in the high and very high. Uh, and so that was, that again, was really nice to see. Um, even though literacy didn't bounce back as quickly as math, we're seeing some really good growth there. And so, you know, that's something we're, we're hoping will continue and hopefully they achieve, so follow.
So if you go back one slide, sorry. If you look at grade four and then the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations is at thirty-one percent of our of last year's fourth grade, so this year's current fifth grade. Thirty-one percent of them met or exceeded the state expectations of, in regards to MCAS. So just, I want to go back in time. So that means that our current fifth grade was in first grade? At the onset of the pandemic hit? Second grade? Yes. Thinking about, because I was watching those slides move.
Yep.
Like if you're looking at thirty-one percent, like trying to tell the story of what kind of an impact that has, because then you see that large jump.
Right.
Coming out of second, so those fifth grade, which was now our current sixth grade, were third graders. And you start to make that transition out of like phonics and phonemic awareness and more. And then you see the percent meeting or exceeding stays pretty consistently.
Right.
In the fifties and sixties from there.
Right.
Which still isn't where we want it. We want more than half of our right, grade levels.
They're showing good.
There's a shift.
And if, that's a great point to make and is one, um, that we had discussed internally, but thank you for, um, pointing.
With the iReady data too.
You know, the groups where it shut down at that crucial point in, um, teaching reading was huge. Um, you know, for folks that had it shut down either in second or third grade, that's such a pivotal, pivotal point, especially if you think about it. It was March of their third grade year. We just completely shut down.
The fifth grade I thought was shut down a grade, oh, our.
They're in grade two.
Yeah.
Our current, yeah, sixth grade. I'm just thinking in terms of
Right.
You know, March of their third grade year. And then schools, including us, or school districts, including us, were scrambling, what are we going to provide? While they're home from March fifteenth, was that Monday? Sixteenth, maybe? Sixteen.
Yeah.
Thirteen.
Yeah, because they're back online pretty quick.
Yeah. Through June, you know, whatever we got out that year, June twentieth.
But just thinking about resource allocation
Yes.
And how we think about professional development experiences and the purchases of the new curricula and being able to use these data points to then really ensure that she, fifth grade, we don't want to send sixth grade with
Right.
Thirty-one percent of them. I mean, that's a little over a quarter of them being on quote unquote grade level
Right.
for state's expectations.
Right.
And that group that's moving through those, I mean, in my opinion, it was the first graders that were in, you know, the first graders in twenty twenty and second and third that are kind of that little bubble might always need just a little different type of support as they move through and that's
Absolutely.
gotta be okay.
Right. And, and you're going to see as we get to the iReady data that it's, you know, we're not dissimilar other Massachusetts groups that are taking iReady or national, you know, the national assessments.
The high school data though, I feel like that's very, it's concerning. The largest percentage is in the very low category and all of the other ones are not like that. Are we doing anything in the high school?
Yeah, no, they're, they're, they're very aware of this, um, and I think would certainly equal your concern, if not, uh, go beyond. And so they are working towards how, uh, we support students individually, but also as a class, uh, if need be, and looking at to, at what specifically we can bring to students to boost them.
I, I feel like last year, did Frank say that we were doing an enrichment class or something like?
Foundations.
Foundations.
Yeah.
Okay. And that started this year? And is it all kids in there? I couldn't remember.
Uh, a lot of it is your ninth graders, but you could have, uh, some 10th graders in there as well. It's generally your ninth and 10th group.
Mm-hmm.
However, uh, they, if need be, there are support classes that they can, um, develop and, you know, break out different sections. Um, it's just a question of unfortunately rearranging some staff schedules and student schedules to do so. But if needed, we'll do it.
Okay. The student, the sixty-three students that are very low, does that mean that they didn't score high enough on it that they have to retake it?
There are some in there that have to retake it. Absolutely.
I didn't know if it was all of them or if it was just.
It's a good portion of them.
Okay. And that's coming up, correct? Isn't it? That's soon?
Yeah. To November.
November.
Yep.
I think to, um, you know, the, the new MCAS in 10th grade is, is I'm sorry, the, the non-legacy MCAS is fairly new in the high school and you know, a lot of times, even though when standard shifts, it's not really until the assessment shift that, that folks can really start to see how the instruction needs to shift. So back when we were doing Park and Burchland, I really saw that in action, right? It's like when people started seeing what kids needed to be doing. Oh, this is why we're doing X, Y and Z. And so I think that we're kind of in that process now and we're working as an, in the ELL department to really kind of shift the way we actually, what curricular materials we use and how, how we're teaching, um, ELA because it's really shifted from, you know, kind of a heavy and literary analysis to more of just critical thinking and using texts from various genres and all of these kinds of things that are, you know, not necessarily how we traditionally have taught ELA. And I think, you know, some part of that might be what we're seeing in this as well. Not that it's okay. I'm just saying that, that people are aware, we're making these shifts.
Actually, Ms. Brown did some professional development, voluntary professional development with some of the high school staff this summer around some of that. Both was ELA and social studies, I believe. Am I correct?
Yes, social studies have made changes too since the two thousand and eighteen standard shifts.
Math. Um, and again, this was just breaking down some of the, uh, the, uh, growth data, just to give you an idea. And you can see again, in, um, math, you're seeing that at grade five, thirty-seven percent in that very high, which was exciting to see. And then in grade four, um, you're seeing nineteen percent and thirteen percent in high and very high. And then you can see where the mean SGP's land. So, you know, these are things that, uh, we're excited to see that type of growth. It's not, um, lost balance in terms of the achievement though, and, and what we need to do and continue to work on there. As you go to the other grade levels, you're seeing, um, grade seven, oh, you take off there with forty-one percent in the very high, uh, which was exciting to see. And then you're seeing smaller percentages, but you know, grade six had twenty-one percent and nineteen percent. And then grade eight and ten, you're seeing, uh, your higher percentages in the high and, uh, moderate ranges and nine percent in the very high. So we know there's the, there's work to be done here. Uh, this is where we are and, um, we need to talk even further. That's the state assessment that obviously was given last spring. Now we're going to move into, uh, fall assessments that, uh, were given just recently and give you an idea of sort of where our students are this fall in comparison to say others in Massachusetts who are taking these same assessments and nationally as well as where, uh, things have been historically.
And where are our schools with sharing this data with their staff?
Um.
Shared it?
They have not all shared it to, to this level, but they're beginning to, yeah.
And how about communicating with families? I know I received MCAS reports in the mail.
And I already should have gone home.
Yeah, should have gone together because some were mailing together.
It may have been. I just.
The reason I know that is because they're using our postage machine here. And so they were doubling the.
Doubling them up.
Doubling.
Yes. So I already, I already still does not allow us to share much via their portal. I mean, you can go on and see what its scale score is, but you can't like compare it or see anything. So we have to still send those, those PDFs out. Yeah.
And then is there a plan though for schools, once they've communicated with faculties to then potentially communicate with families? I mean, I, I do think there's, there's a different set of data that we're looking at and it's one thing for us to talk as a group and, and have discussions or leadership teams to talk, but and I know this group and I'm sure the leadership team says the same, there's faces attached to those five and those forty-nine kids that were having very low growth scores and it might be worth having some like informational night. So families are aware of some of the things like the MTSS teams or where they're caught.
Some supports.
Really is.
Yeah.
You can't advocate if you don't necessarily know or know what to ask if you're not aware that you should be a little concerned or, you know, maybe your child had great growth and didn't necessarily hit the mark, but those are pieces of information that once faculties are made aware, maybe we should have some informational night since families haven't received data like this in
Wow.
in a while.
No, good points. Um, I know that, uh, we've been discussing it with mostly the principals, but maybe we can start to break that down even further.
Um, so for those of you who aren't familiar with the iReady, um, there's a dark green, which means the student at the beginning of the year is mid-on green or above. So if I'm a first grader and I am dark green, I like, uh, where a first grader would be mid or even above first grade level. Uh, green is where we expect most kids to be early on grade level because they're just starting the year. Yellow would be when you're below grade level. The light red, two grades lower and the dark red, three grades below. And then obviously if you're in kindergarten, you can't be three grades below. So you're not going to see the same color scheme at the lower ages. So what you have here is, um, the historical national norm, so the national norms back in fall eighteen to nineteen. Uh, the national in school right now, um, which is eight million, somebody, you know, kids that have taken this across the nation. The kids in Massachusetts who have taken it and then ALPS. And so as you can see that I superimposed our information on there and it does, as pretty, I apologize. Um, but overall, this is where we're starting. And, you know, our kids, we have, um, kind of starting ahead of the game, even despite all the things that, you know, the pandemic in terms of the number of our kids who are mid early on grade level. This is all, this is K through eight. Um, and, um, the, the lower amount of kids who are two or three grade levels below. And then we're going to break it down into, um, each grade level. So you can see for math and for, um, ELA.
I'm just wondering out of curiosity, if at some point we might take a look. Coordinated and ran a pretty extensive summer school or extended learning experience last year. So I'm curious to know. As we now have MCAS data and we see some significant areas of concern, do we see any potential rebound? Even between MCAS data to fall iReady data for students in particular who participated in the summer academies? Because that's a really telling piece of data and can be a really potentially strong tool as we start to think about families going into that academy next academic year or the, the close of this academic year that of the one hundred and fifty kids that participated, seventy-five percent of them showed X, Y or Z on their fall iReady data. We didn't see summer slide or whatever you want to call it. We actually saw some potential acceleration versus any additional regression. And that might be an interesting data point to consider.
I agree.
At least for me. I'm curious. I want to know.
Yeah, we can, we can break that out.
Yes.
Uh, we have not broken it out yet, but that's something that we can certainly do.
But it also can be valid. But it also can be validating to the educators who put the time in, to the families who brought their students and say, hey, listen, this had an impact and we'll spoil for the child.
No, I think.
They gave up of their summer and then they can see, hey, I got X or Y or Z as a result of the hard work I put in, like thinking about the whole child. Thinking about their survey results from the beginning, or maybe we're seeing students who don't necessarily feel like they're engaged. That can be a nice boost to some of those students.
Yes.
Heather, on the prior slide, uh, forty-nine percent and historical national norms. It, it explained to me why only twenty-seven percent are either at or above grade level and will start at least a year or more nationally. Why is that? Why is that so?
That's a big question.
Well, I mean, I mean, are, are norms off? I mean, it's always, if.
I mean, if you look.
Five percent are a year or more below.
If you just think about Massachusetts and the quality of education we have compared to the nation, right? That, you know, nationwide, usually Massachusetts is doing better nationwide because there, unfortunately, there are a lot of kids who are not functioning at grade level. Which is, I had the whole push for the common core and, you know, some sort of common expectations for kids. Um, but yeah, that's really unfortunate, the current reality um of, of, of school is and, 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 you know, closing those gaps, right? Because you're always going to have the kiddos who, you know, high fly because of whatever's going on with them. And so what do we need to do to pr- to provide for kids so that all kids can be at grade level and thriving? Just that's, that's what I meant by like, it's a big question.
Yeah. Interesting.
Um. And we're starting ahead of the game in terms compared to nationally and uh, uh, in terms of Massachusetts um at this beginning of the school year. Um. The one that you can see here, kindergarten, um, is, this, this is just the beginning of the school year um compared to mass and national um, and then historical norms, uh, we're not starting ahead of the game. But you'll, you'll see as we progress, of course, these are different grade groups, but it's interesting every year how much the kindergarteners grow. Um, so when you get to first grade, our, you know, our below grade level really shrinks compared to the others. Um. And um, same in grade two, it's significantly smaller. Um, so, you know, the goal is to try to get everyone in the green. Um. And it's just important for us to kind of see where we're at, to see, okay. Really, these are just averages. We, as an MTSS team, dig into this data to see who are the kids, what do they need? Do they need, you know, tier-two intervention? And, and sometimes we'll see trends like, wow, we have all of these kids are really struggling. Maybe this is a tier-one problem, right? Maybe we do need new curricular materials or a new way of approaching things. So the data as it is now doesn't really give those faces like, like you were saying. But it gives us a good kind of starting point in terms of, okay, how are we comparing? And then um, this is when you start talking about the kiddos who um got shut down, right? So these third graders were shut down in kindergarten, our fourth graders were shut down in grade one, and our fifth graders were shut down in grade two. And you start to see um, some of the impact here on, 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 on them. Um. So it goes up and down in comparison to the state depending. And then sixth, seventh, and eighth. Um. There's less kids significantly behind. These kids weren't necessarily at the, that same delicate space when it's the little ones who are missing the kind of instruction that, you know, that key instruction um when they were they're interruptors.
It's really interesting, though, if you think about it, sixth grade, they were in third when they were shut down and
Look at them.
They've rebounded pretty well.
Yeah, and that's just our teachers.
You know, that's, that's really exciting to see.
Yeah.
Because hopefully it gives everybody hope, gives me hope. Um, as we look at that.
And it is possible, yes. And then the iReady reading, it really is just reading. So MCAS measures writing as well. iReady is only reading. Um, and one of the things that's interesting about the iReady is it's a universal screener. It really gives us some good baseline information to see if there's kids that we need to probe further in terms of finding out what's going on. But one of the things we're finding at the younger ages is um, sometimes they can score well in phonics and phonemic awareness, for example, because they've learned some good compensatory strategies. But then you actually sit down and have them read to you and they really struggle with decoding. So I'm just putting that out there that we use this as one of our data points, but we have a lot of other one-on-one assessments that we use with kids to really make sure um, we understand where they're at in terms of their learning and how to instruct them the best based on their needs. But again, it's just good for us to kind of have an idea of, of where we're at starting the year. It's something that we can compare it to in terms of uh the end of the year, how much how many of our kids have uh really reached that grade level? Um, because the further, obviously, kids are behind, we want to catch them up because each year uh that they're behind, they're, they're missing out on that instruction. One of the things that the new curriculum I'll talk about in a minute, um, especially the wit and wisdom, is um really about in terms of reading, even if a kid is struggling with decoding, we're dealing with that with our foundations curriculum. But they're never going to get lower level text because they can't access it independently. We've purchased Learning Ally, we have Google Read and Write so that all kids can access that higher level text, even if it's listening to it. Because all the research is showing that for them to comprehend better, they need to have access to that background knowledge and, and that vocabulary. Um, and how as a nation, we've kind of done it is we give them easier texts, but we're depriving them of that. So it's been a big shift. I think you'll see the impact of that as well as, you know, we're never ignoring kids being able to access text independently, but we're also removing the barrier if they can't so that they can um still um get the same grade level texts as their peers. So here you go again, this is math and these are the kids that were shut down in kindergarten, first and second grade. And it varies depending on that group. These are, you know, obviously some kids. Um, but it's pretty cool though, as again rebounding, right? So here's our eighth grade. Thirty-one and twenty-six percent at or above just starting the year. And those are the kids who had that forty-one percent growth last year, right? It was grade last year, so they're currently eighth grade. But as much as there is always to celebrate, like Mr. Smith was saying, it's, we're always honing in on um all the kiddos who are a grade or more or below because we want to make sure they're getting what they need to get to grade level.
Obviously, this gives us now information as to where they are now, which is helpful.
Is the plan, though, we've had varying models, I believe, since iReady's adoption. Plan to administer mid-year and then the end of year, because I know certain years we didn't administer three times.
So last year and the year before, we administered the diagnostic three times. Um, one, we were um, got a grant and so part of that was that we had to give the diagnostic. The pushback has always been, the diagnostic takes a long time. We don't want to spend too much time assessing. We want to make sure, but um, I, the plan is to, from now on, to, to do the full diagnostic, the three times a year.
A lot of this we've said, but just takeaways as we finish on this part of the. Now, we've seen our enrollment grow for a second year, which is exciting. Uh, our enrollment, our student body is becoming increasingly diverse. The last three years, our high needs group has grown and uh that's certainly being um a lot of that's uh contributed by the new definition of um low income, excuse me. Uh, we're excited that we continue to see students at all grade levels sharing with us that they feel like they have supportive relationships and that they are feeling overall positively about school climate. Um, and then the fact that their schools are, are inclusive environments. Um, we hit our, the majority of our growth goals as we showed, uh, as we expanded out some of the growth data. Um, we didn't hit them all, though. And so that's something that we need to be very aware of and continue to work on. Um, interesting that um we're seeing that we're still scoring below for the most part. Um, here we are, you know, looking at twenty-twenty-two scores uh below the twenty-nineteen um, scores. That's an ELA math and in some cases, science. Um, we are seeing obviously science as a strength, uh, and we saw math jumping out as uh rebounding a little bit quicker, especially at specific grade levels. So those are things that um, you know, both give us hope, but also give us direction as to where the work and support needs to go. Uh, and then looking at the iReady as we just did, it's nice to see, obviously, that uh in some grade levels, we're above the national and state averages. But we also know that in um all of those graphs, there is a red component, and then there's a significant yellow component, which, you know, we can't certainly um negate the fact that uh yellow means that they're looking at possibly being one grade level below. And so there's, there's never a shortage of work. Uh, it's now directing it as some of the discussion has been on during this presentation and and how best um refocus and support students who certainly are students who are in immediate need, but all of our students sure that um we're giving them what they need.
And just to your point, um, while not all schools might have shared this data or the KDA, you know, as a staff, MTSS teams are definitely looking at this and then, you know, triangulating data just to find out who needs, they're using this for um intervention placement purposes.
Or and it's not, I mean, I think, I think the data overall speaks to forward progress, especially when you consider, which wasn't a part of this, but we didn't have the best attendance last year for a lot of reasons.
No.
Right? Still had.
Right.
Contend with COVID, we had teacher absences, we had teacher shortages in some cases, we had teachers of record in some cases. Um, and we had student attendance. We were still following COVID protocols last year. So kids were not in as often as we would have liked. And we started the year at more than an arm's distance away from each other. There's a pairing of materials, there were no carpets. So, I mean, that's a lot of progress based on the fact, schools may have been open, but they were not open in a typical fashion.
Right, right.
So as we think about this academic year and yes, it's still not quite where we want to be, like schools are still not operating quite like they were in twenty nineteen. But they're opening eh more closely to what you consider a traditional way than we've been afforded in the past few years. So I think the fact we were able to make gains, given the constraints we were still operating under is huge. It's just how do we really hone in now on those particular students who we didn't quite reach last year with, with all that was going on.
And just again, kudos to our amazing teachers who pivot and pivot and pivot and do everything they need to do. So, it's, I think.
Pivot's not one of their most.
I know, but they really.
Anymore?
Doing three sixty, right? But that's what I mean, you know, going from remote to hybrid to, you know, last year where, like you said, the absences were such that you know, Bobby's out for a week and I got to figure out how to get Bobby catch, caught up and, you know, all these other things. It's, it was a lot. It is still a lot.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, we can't say enough about our staff. They've, they've been incredible and then they've been the reason why we're seeing some of those.
Exactly.
Things.
That's what I'm getting at.
How they partner with families doing that. Final question.
I'm just gonna, even though it's your report, I might just put something up so that we're not. Oh, good idea.
And upcoming movies.
Yes.
There are some good movies. If you're not watching a school committee.
Okay, so that's the end of our status report. Thank you so much.
And this will obviously and has contributed to what will be presented next time, which will be our goals.
Excellent.
So you have the entire leadership team here next time and um they've seen this, they've been part of uh this discussion, they've seen some other charts as well. Uh, help them drill down more specifically and then it's helping them finalize their goals with this down.
Okay. Moving right along, we're on to five point two point one, our quarterly report for the first quarter. And this is.
Yep, it is. Hello, everyone. Um, so as Greg just said, um, your package, your five twenty-three first quarter financial report. It's on the operating budget as well as your grants and your revolving accounts as of September thirtieth. I do apologize. I thought I had numbered the pages and as I'm looking, I'm like, where did the numbers go? So my apology, um, as always, I move right to where the spreadsheet portion is, which is page five. Um, and just go to the numbers or detail there for you to read. Additional. But on the um, page five is your operating budget. Top section of the spreadsheet. Uh, as a reminder, most salaries are encumbered at the beginning of the uh school year. Um, some items are not encumbered, such as uh athletics and uh some of the department heads, some of the uh medical staff uh may not be, um, certainly um substitute teachers. You will see in some of the uh line items that there are some um large balances, uh, the teacher's unit A, there's your five hundred thousand dollars sitting there. That's only two and a half percent of the, the total twenty million that we budget for um staffing. Remember, this is as of uh September thirtieth, so we're still, you know, having some vacancies and, and figuring out the, the details. So hopefully you're going to see this shift on the next quarter. And that goes the same with paraprofessional uh line. It has been very um challenging this year to fill some vacancies, uh, especially over at Meadowbrook School. So um, staff has been um staff that we have very helpful in trying to make all that, that work. So we are still actually seeing vacancies um today. We just signed one before we came to this meeting. So um anyways, is any.
Bad resignations.
Resignations.
We've hired, we've had resignations as well.
Yeah, and um.
Challenge.
This is the last year, the, the final year of the paraprofessional um contract. Um. We do need to, to talk about that because um paraprofessionals are being pulled to other districts, other companies. Um, so it's a, it's a bigger conversation that we will be talking about in the very near future with all of you.
Starting that negotiation soon.
Soon, yeah.
Who is the liaison?
Amy.
Big job.
We're putting together our, our background information as are they. And um, so we'll be meeting with Azalinta soon and uh preparing ourselves for discussions with the paraprofessional group.
Right. Uh, does anyone have any specific questions on the oper- I mean, I'm sorry, on the salary side of the operating budget there? Okay, and the bottom side is your expense side of the operating budget. Um, so this is where all your requisitions, purchase orders, invoices come through. Um, as you make your way down, you're going to see contracted services has a significant amount uh remaining there at, as of September thirtieth. That's one point four million dollars remaining. That's because the bulk of the contracted services just have not been encumbered yet there, as well as your out-of-district tuitions. Um, remember, we had a new uh new director of student services and, and new staff. So this report, as of September thirtieth, we were still working on getting the, the contracts for special ed and those kind of things. You'll see that change definitely on your second quarter. Um, we always work on the educational supplies, obviously, as school opens up and we have the new uh curriculum. There's items that will need to be ordered through that month of, you know, September, October. So you'll see that come down as well. Um, does anyone have any specific questions on the expense side? No. So as you look at the bottom of the page there, you'll see, I'll just remind uh folks that our budget this year is thirty-three million, three, one, nine, zero, one, five. Uh, year-to-date, as of September thirtieth, we have expended four million, five, thirty-eight, six, eight, four. We have encumbered twenty-four million, two, five, seven, six, four, seven. And the remaining available balance is four million, five, two, two, six, eight, four. I do see the operating budget, you know, in line to where it should be. I don't see any concerns right now. As always, I'll be looking at these accounts and bringing any concern to your attention. Um, the next page, page six, is your um grants and your revolving accounts. At the top section are your grants. I always start with the federal grants. I believe back in August or early September, you already had approved the grants. And if anything comes in, I always bring it forward to you to approve. You start at the top there, you'll see we had um, thought it was important to show you um S R two. Uh, we have fully expended and are now going into, have gone into S R three, which is the, the large grant, the two million dollar grant. Um, that one, as a reminder, goes until September of two thousand twenty-four. Um, you know, we have a plan which changes accordingly as, as things change. Um, so. So hopefully, hopefully we can stretch those funds out until two thousand twenty-four. We have our regular grants, the Title One, Title Two, Title Five, the Special Ed IDEA Grant, Early Childhood Grant. Then we go right into the state grants, we have the Foundation Preserve, which was rolled over from last year. The Annual Comprehensive School Health DPH Grant that Kelly LaBumbarde oversees. We have the Metco Grant, which the bulk of those funds helped transportation for the Metco students. We have the Teacher Diversification Grant, as you recall, that was really a rollover from the prior year, but they kind of made us do this new grant. But it's, it's not, it's not new, Heather and I just kind of shake our head. It's just, the process has not been the way it typically is. So you'll see all these grants being expended as time goes on. Then we have two private grants, which are really older grants, I think they were like three-year grants, that's why the FY twenty-one. The one-eight foundation and the project lead the way sustainability grant, these again will be expended this year. This is the final year. Does anyone have any questions on the grants? No? So down the bottom section are your revolving accounts. So these roll over from one year into the next fiscal year. So the amount that you see in that very first column is the amount that was carried forward. You're going to see that things, now that we're getting past the pandemic, things are starting to look more normal and, you know, healthy balances. And I'm very, very pleased to see that. The athletic revolving account. Twenty-two thousand there, the athletic stadium rental has just ten thousand. I don't know if you recall, at the end of last year, we had the twenty-nine thousand and I said we were going to be paying the, yeah. Exactly, so we paid that twenty thousand. Yep, resurfacing the track. So that's why there's only ten thousand there. The school rental accounts, you know, hundred and sixty, it's a cumulative of many different accounts throughout the schools. Student mobile technology insurance, we talked about that that's a very successful self-funded insurance program. Fifty-four thousand dollars sits there because it's always a little top-heavy at the beginning of the year. So, you know, as the year goes on and computers break, then we have to do the purchase orders from this account.
Is that the average annual receipt, ninety-five? Per year?
I don't know if it's that amount, I'd really, I would have to check on that for you.
Cause it seems like to your point, we are getting top-heavy.
Yeah.
About looking at that.
And it has been, has it been three years?
Sounds like three.
Because.
Definitely had it.
Cause we had it going.
Started going into COVID, so twenty nineteen, twenty twenty was the first year.
And we offered one year, two year or three year. So that's why I said.
So offering one, two or three?
I, I believe we, we are. But we did have the conversation that, you know, Ryan Quimby, we would bring him in and kind of talk about it again to see like, you know, do we need to make some changes to this program? So we can certainly monitor this. And bring him in and have those discussions if we need to. The staff. Teacher and paramobile technology repairs, that's actually the ELEA deposits those funds with us and we keep them on hand. And you see there's twenty-four hundred dollars there. I just got an invoice today for four hundred dollars, so you'll see that go down to two thousand.
How do we fund that, Pam?
That ELEA gave me twenty-five hundred. Yes, they actually get it back today. Yeah.
Well, good.
Then we have the school gift accounts. You know that all the gifts come through your approval. So that's again, throughout the school district, which is why you see it at seventy-two thousand.
And it's up to the principals to expend this.
Some cases it's actually designated, the gift may, you know, maybe a gift that's towards, right, to books or towards the music program or. So that, that money would have to then be expended by that department.
Right. Tuition revolving account, so we have two hundred and thirty-seven thousand there. That is from pre-K and from any special ed student that might be coming from another district to one of our programs. You know, these funds will certainly come in handy during our budget discussions. And we'll be talking more about that and how to allocate those and use those to our advantage for programs. Circuit breaker. So circuit breaker is at seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. But since this, this was September thirtieth, I can tell you that the bulk of that has been expended on tuitions, out of district tuitions. I can also tell you that I'm very happy to say that I was just notified, um, circuit breaker for this year. We get those funds quarterly and we hadn't received the funds yet. So, you know, me as the business manager, along with all the other business managers are looking for that money, you know, like, and, and what exactly how much it was going to be, because it's always, you know, an estimation during the budget season. And I'm happy to say that it's one point two million dollars that we'll be getting, which is a very good thing. Because we have had additional out of district placements. So I also want to remind you that circuit breaker, part of the, the formula now includes out of district transportation. For special ed, out of district tuition. So that is also a very positive component that helped increase those revenues. The transportation revolving, you're going to see that there's a hundred and forty-seven thousand sitting there. I just had not encumbered the funds yet under the, the purchase order. So you'll see that always offsets the transportation expenses for the district. School lunch, I'm very happy to say that once again, it is a self-sustaining program with a healthy balance. We hadn't seen that for a few years now. Also, I think in the blurb, I, I always write up that she's supposed to have like a certain number, twelve weeks or something like that. Which, which comes to about two hundred and fifty thousand, so that's like a minimum amount that she should have in the food service. Yeah, some, somewhere around there. I did put it into the.
That's, that's three is all federal.
It is.
Right?
Yep, cause there, there's no, no, yeah. Nobody's paying for, for lunch right now.
A little bit.
Say that.
Like if they purchase snacks or they purchase.
Yeah, that's where they're, that's where they're balancing.
Well, they did buy a second lunch. Yes. And those items would still be at a cost. Yes, she's able to, or the program is able to generate some revenue.
Revenue, but not nearly what it used to be. I, because last year, I think she.
Take my son taking me for. Fish or not, parade.
We probably anticipate that may go away next year. A federal grant. We don't know.
We don't know.
Yeah.
We, we didn't know what was going to happen until like two weeks before school. Here, so, you know, they're really honing in and looking at all of this stuff. And, you know, we see the percentages of low income showing up. And this is not just here, this is. Everywhere, life is a little different than it used to be. So we'll have to see what happens in regards to that. Your last account is the school choice account, you know. This is our third year doing school choice, I believe. So we have some revenue there of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Again, that will be a discussion during budget season that we'll be talking about.
Is that thirty-one all we expect for the year in receipts?
No.
Okay.
No, that's just what we had received to date.
It comes in.
As of September thirtieth. Actually, I think the school choice comes in with monthly chapter seventy money. So I always kind of need to look at that, because remember the chapter seventy money goes to a town. The school choice goes to the school revolving account. So, and because Sung Meadow hadn't had school choice. The town treasurer, like when these funds came in, just thought it was part of chapter seventy, so we had to have that conversation and, you know, make sure she, yeah. So. All in all, just as a reminder here, your grants are at, you know, five point three million dollars, you're revolving to another two million dollars. So without these funds, we would need to be busting a lot more revenue from, you know, the town. So we're always very grateful for all of this. I just want to remind everyone that it's imperative to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time and are changing constantly.
Any questions on the quarterly? Can motion to accept the quarterly report. Or not?
Uh, move to accept the quarterly report for the first quarter. Date or no?
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by internal discussions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Very sporty zero.
You ran from Q.
Okay, we went along with it on the curriculum and professional development. Heather?
Yes.
Great.
Um, so just to give a little bit of background to why we. Been purchasing new curricular materials and in addition to a lot of funding being available for that. There have been a lot of different things happening in the state and nationwide to kind of. Keep us up to date on research in terms specifically on how children read. So that is going to affect the literacy curriculum. And then obviously other subjects as well. But the mass literacy initiative is all about making sure kids are getting an explicit instruction and literacy. There's new dyslexia guidelines that came out that are obviously connected to that. And even our own equity audit that we did back in two thousand nineteen. I mean, we continue to go back to the fact that we want to increase the number of students from identified subgroups. To successfully complete honors and advanced placement courses. So it goes back to what we were talking about with the data, is making sure everyone's getting what they. To be able to enter those courses once they're in high school. And obviously that starts very early. So in terms of literacy, I just wanted to share this graphic with you. There's a whole nationwide conversation about how we've taught students to read traditionally across the nation. And what we're finding is that from thirty-five to five, forty percent of kids. You know, any kind of structured literacy approach really works for kids. But there is a good chunk of kids who really need that explicit instruction. So this information in addition, addition to what I was just talking about, really kind of led us towards that new curriculum for literacy in particular. And so it's going to jump real quick to, we, like you know, have chose foundations for K to three, which is really about that word recognition, that explicit instruction and phonics. We use Hegarty for phonemic awareness. And then the wit and wisdom helps kids with the language comprehension, giving them that knowledge building, the content-rich curriculum. We went through a whole process, both for this and for math curriculum. Were there committees and we looked at ed reports, we looked at a variety of things and then came to consensus on this. So we were very lucky that we got funding from DESI to purchase the literacy curriculum, as well as all of our math curriculum. K to eight went with illustrative math. Very aligned to how we have been really kind of shifting our math to a more inquiry, concept-based approach. The kids really understand the math instead of just kind of how traditionally across the country, you know, a lot of times we teach kids algorithms and then they memorize the algorithms. But when they actually have to apply what they know, they can't because they don't really know what they're knowing, but you know. So. K to five had piloted the last, that, that last year. This year, more teachers K to five are taking on illustrative math, but not all, because they are also taking on basically two new literacy pieces. So next year will be our full rollout for illustrative math K to five. Along the lines of math nine through twelve, also went through a process here at the high school. They decided on reveal because it is a nice bridge between that traditional instruction and the more inquiry-paced instruction that they know their need to transition towards. But since they're still kind of in the middle of that transition, they thought reveal would be a good. Middle of the road, it's still considered a highly, hi- high quality instructional material with ed reports. It's not necessarily the same kind of instruction as illustrative math, but it has that component. Open ed sci, we got a grant for that as Mrs. Blair was just talking about. And that is a really robust inquiry-based science curriculum. That has been really successful at the high school. They haven't created a high school or elementary. Portion of this yet, but they're working on it. And one of the things that's really beautiful about it, it's open source curriculum. But with the grant, we've gotten some really. Great professional development for the teachers in terms of how to use this and, and the why behind all of it. And then finally, the state has also been pushing for. More proficiency, proficiency-based language instruction, where kids are really hearing and speaking the language more than ever before. And so almost all of our language teachers, six to twelve, went to the Mass Foreign Language Association's proficiency academy this summer. And then they took on Adios, which is a proficiency-based curriculum. And they're actually, I'll talk about PD in a minute, but they're going to be working with the creators of that textbook tomorrow and an intense PD. So a lot of great things going on.
Other for the, about pair to foundations K to three. Given the growth scores that we saw for fourth grade, is that able to extend to students who are in fourth grade, but maybe in need?
So what we're doing with the, so I'm glad you brought that up. So the reading interventionists, we've, you know, while we're, we're kind of tweaking and improving tier one, we've been tweaking and improving tier two as well. And so for those kids, a lot of the, the interventionists, we're really trying to do everything in the small period of time. And we've kind of honed it into, let's focus our, our, our work on phonics and phonemic awareness. And so they're using the information that they have from these phonics readers and phonemic awareness readers to really work on that. So third graders are getting foundations, while they might be getting grade level foundations in the class. Kind of getting the phonics and phonemic awareness gaps, that's kind of filling that in. It's not really the double dose because we are still kind, we still have so many kiddos who, who need that support. And then fourth and fifth grade are using Just Words, which is another Wilson-based program, so a lot of the same routines. And so, and then of course, we have some Wilson-trained folks for the more intense intervention. But we're really trying to get the tier one and tier two to be more aligned, it makes sense for kids. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and then obviously, we still have math recovery in play. And then obviously, I ready is part of the core, since everyone receives that as well.
So I ready, everyone gets. Access to the diagnostic. But there for the core curriculum, they're getting illustrative math for their personalized learning ST math.
Five, ST math?
Yes.
Okay. Cause there was a mix last year.
There was a mix and what was happening was. Kids were kind of, it, it depended which class, what they got and both because of the grant that we had, where we had to have a certain amount of minutes. But also for coherence and really using that ST, ST math now has a lot of more flexibility for teachers to look at data, to kind of assign things, to change their path, to work with kids. We're trying to use that common planning time to look at that data together. So when some people are using this program, some people are using this program, it kind of made it difficult. So we decided on ST math for math.
K to five and then I ready.
Is, so for the middle school, they have six to eight, I ready, reading and math for their personalized instruction.
And then a flip side, I ready.
Reading is still available for personalized instruction.
K to five?
Yes. And I also purchased Lexia for kids who, sorry, I'm sorry, I ready is three to five reading. K to two, they have Lexia.
Okay.
And then I purchased additional Lexia licenses for kids who need, who are still struggling, particularly in those foundational skills. Because I ready, while it deals with that, it's, it's more, more helpful for the older ages. So they have access for the, the Lexi as well. Thank you. So these are just in your slide, I'm not going to go through all of these, but just know they give you a little more information about the curriculum that we decided on and how it did in ed reports. Open Si Ed is not, was not at the time reviewed by ed reports, but it's highly regarded and same organization that provides grants, one-eight foundation for ST math. And Project Lead the Way also gives these grants out for Open Side Ed. And then Adios obviously aligns with the DESI World's Language Frameworks. And it's been really great for them to get the instructional and professional development and now the curricular materials that help them to deliver that instruction. Which is the point of all of this, right, to get the, in the high-quality instructional materials in the hands of everyone. And so the work of the curriculum committee is done. Now we're working on the implementation committee where we worked on rolling this out. We created a plan for the training, which I'll talk about, there's been a lot of training available for folks. Created a pacing guide, working on communication for stakeholders. Talked, we talked about family night for I ready, we're looking at a literacy night to kind of explain some more about these curriculums. And the biggest thing that's been great is embedded professional development for the literacy curriculum, for foundations in particular. We have a foundations coach who meets with the common planning time, the A through three common planning time, six times a year. And it's right in time, like this is where you're at, what you need kind of support. And we've heard nothing but good things about that coach. So really lucky that they have that, we're trying to work something like that out with wit and wisdom. So that implementation committee was really made sure we had the structures in place to make all of this work, right? It's not just about getting the, like, curricular materials in people's hands, but. Work, right, it's not just about getting the like curricular materials in people's hands, but. You know, the training for at the time with each other to learn with and from each other to unpack it, all of these things and. Again, there's never enough time, so I'm not ever saying like everyone has enough time, but you know, within the constraints of time, we're trying to make the best use of it. And uh again, I'm not gonna go through all of this professional development, but you can see we've used as much as we have had available to us from. Half days to the first couple of days to uh now we have our first full day tomorrow. Um which I'll talk about in a minute, but um from the summer all the way to the beginning of the year. Um we've provided a lot of professional development for folks, um and there are a lot of teachers who attended professional development over the summer and thanks. To S R funding, we were able to give people stipends for that, which has been great. So tomorrow, uh all the K to five core teachers and special educators will be attending a wit and wisdom module and lesson study. And it's in person, which I'm excited about, so there actually be just. Uh really working on planning and unpacking the modules, unpacking the lessons. Uh the fifth grade math teachers and the coaches, because fifth grade math teachers obviously aren't taking on a literacy curriculum. They have been um all in involved with illustrative math, so they'll be working on the problem-based instruction. Um and sorry, there should be a bullet there, the world language teachers will be in the Adios training. Uh all coaches are planning on attending the art of coaching this December, it's Elena Aguilar's workshop. Uh the art and music teachers are working on culturally proficient arts instruction, Aaron Ty has really taken the lead with that, it's been great. The K to five P E uh department head, Michelle Bon Giovanni, will be uh working with the P E teachers on just uh. I can't remember what the title of it is, but it's we really trying to differentiate so people are getting what they need. And then the high school in Burchland Park are really working, the high school is working specifically on universal designing, design for learning, the Burtons have been honing in on. The one aspect of U D L, which is the multiple means of engagement. And like I said, our common planning time continues to be used for the implementation, so. There's a lot going on, it's exciting, it's a lot, the teachers have a lot on their plates and you know, we're constantly telling them how. We want everyone to give themselves grace, it's a lot going on, you know, this all with good intention, but we we know it's a big lift. And um a lot of what we'll be doing this year, I think will make the years after this easier because we'll be, you know, doing this heavy lifting this year. And that's that, if you have questions for me.
Are there sessions? That will eventually occur, it'll be specific to administrators who will then be charged with. Going into classrooms or new curricula. Are being.
Thank you, Chris.
That they are able to provide effective feedback during the implementation phases of the curriculum.
There's a couple of things going on, um curricular wise, all the uh principals did attend some leadership sessions. On illustrative math last year. There are what uh principal sessions that we've all been attending for foundations. Uh there is a wit and wisdom observation professional development that I was just talking to elementary principals about that they will be participating in at some point. Um but most importantly, the work that we're doing with Clee and instructional rounds is all about. Honing our skills and observing and providing actionable feedback. Oh, and we also chose for our book study. Uh handed in compassionate feedback.
It was it was one of a few, it was a.
Yeah, it was a top choice.
Really good.
Survey.
So, I I mean, the the answer to that is in many different ways, we're trying to work on the leadership uh capacity to support this as well. Because obviously we need all hands on deck.
And it's a challenge for administrators to be balancing multiple progress um and trying to. Provide the best possible feedback to educators so that they're supporting the implementation and not. By accident, providing feedback that it might be contradictory, so wanting to make sure they're feeling supported as they're monitoring and. Really helping everyone to be moving in the right direction, so.
They've also been attending all of the Witten with that professional developments.
They they did a good deal this summer.
Yes.
In terms of their their training and then what we're trying to do. Sometimes we have to remind them of this, say, well, when are we just gonna have a meeting? Um Thursdays have been our leadership team meetings and so we try to as much as possible since they're already blocking that timeout. Uh provide professional development and um. Support during those Thursday meetings. What's then does make it challenging to find time to have a a regular meeting, as they would say, but um.
We're doing both.
Doing it, we're doing okay.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Do you have a general sense of how this has been received by the teachers?
So um the first couple of wit and wisdom uh P Ds, they were um the 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 feedback was frustration. Because it was very much about the why and and teachers really obviously want the how. Um and I've, you know, gave the wit and wisdom that feedback, um what comes back is um. Unfortunately and fortunately, wi- wit and wisdom is all about productive struggle, both for kids and for staff. And so it's really designed to learn it by doing it. And by making mistakes and by realizing afterwards why things happen that way. And we have amazing teachers who want to do their best all the time and they just want to do it perfectly. And so for us to ask, just do it and you're gonna, it's gonna be messy, it's so hard. Um so while the the PD could have been better, I also just keep reminding folks that it's messy, it's hard. If this is the case for everyone who's ever tried to do this curriculum. Um the foundations has been um much more well-received, they love their coach. It's um it's a much more straightforward curriculum, you know, it's, you know, you get into a routine and this is what you do. Um and so they've been really uh appreciative of that as well. Um and then illustrative math really just depends on who the facilitator is, but for the most part, it's been good feedback.
I think the in-person piece and you.
It's huge.
Gonna be huge tomorrow for each building to have. And ask all those questions. And what uh Ms. Brown has been um really incredible in trying to do is as she's receiving feedback, she's providing options for. Grade-level teams, um this was in September and October, in terms of meeting them during their C P T time or, you know. Working with the principal can break out for uh an hour or two or or a day if possible. Um and that I think has been received uh very well. And so I think tomorrow, we've set ourselves up hopefully where tomorrow. Can go much better than maybe they receive the remote training.
And we've communicated this, I've I've been in touch with the professional development facilitators tomorrow, I. Principals, if you feel like things are going in a way that's not supporting teachers, it's okay to speak up, this is our professional development. So I think there's a lot in place that will make this happen and this is a much more hands-on, let's just dig into it. Of PD. Thank you. I can't do without, so I'm gonna again.
Yeah.
Nothing up, it's just a school committee meeting.
And thank you, Heather, that's a lot to balance, that's multiple curricula that you're. Really monitoring and supporting implementation of and that's no small feat, so thank you for.
Thank you, and it's also. Lots for the teachers and I just want to recognize that, but um I'm I'm already excited to hear some people saying things like. I couldn't believe when I heard this kid do this, you know, and so. Just being excited and seeing the kids doing things that we might not have expected them to be able to do is is exciting, so I think we'll see that more and more.
Hey, thank you so very much, Heather.
You.
We will move along now, we have a policy. That we are bringing back again, Sarah.
I think we've we've. Nail it this time, um we have both our. Our um policy on harassment, bullying, discrimination and hate crimes and our. And our bullying prevention prevention plan. And we've discussed them the last couple of meetings and it's uh been very good discussion and substantive discussion. The final piece to this was making sure that definitions, which if you're looking at the policy, begin on page two. And if you're looking at the plan, they're a little bit deeper in. They began on, I believe, page nine of um the plan, that they are. Align, which makes sense, and they are aligned and they now all come from. Uh Jesse's definitions, so uh matched him up and. With uh your endorsement, hopefully this evening, we will um start to message out. To all our families that we have made these changes, we'll get this up on our webpage. And um in the messaging, provide links so that people can go to it, so that they have the most updated versions, both of the policy and the. Plan. Just a a highlight, which is somewhat connected, uh and we'll probably be messaging more shortly as well, maybe not in the same message. Um there were regulatory changes to um suspensions, suspension law. And so that would be another update that uh just based on. Mass general law, we'll have to update and just make people aware of in terms of how it impacts our handbook. Um and so that'll be something we'll be putting together as well, it doesn't specifically connect to this, but it does tangentially. Stay both impact the handbook.
Okay, let's uh begin with the policy, please, for a motion.
Listen, I mean, I can try. Um I move to approve the revisions to policy. J I C F B. And the Eastland Middle Public Schools Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan.
Or tomb ball. I'll do it either way, go ahead. Is that it?
As presented.
Thank you, excellent motion, it's no, I stand corrected, that. Uh any discussion? I need a second, thank you. Seconded by Amy. Now discussions. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those both nay, that carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, let's start working on that messaging and get that out.
Hey, we have some discussion on Heritage.
Okay, this um is under old business, it does go back a couple of agendas and. In that discussion, we had asked, uh the committee had asked uh some questions, rightfully so. And uh hopefully we've been able to provide more information to answer those questions. The ultimate um request by the town is that um in Heritage Park. There is uh approximately nineteen acres that was designated back in special town meeting in nineteen fifty-eight. To be used for school purposes. Um as the town looks toward um doing a renovation capital project uh in Heritage Park. They would also like to seek out and apply for a park grant, which could bring in uh approximately four hundred thousand dollars. As part of the funding that would go towards um this renovation um slash capital project. And uh to do so though, they would need that entire. Area to be under the designation of park and and not school purposes slash park.
So I'm looking at this, Gordon, a lot of the material is from our twenty sixteen. Um committee that you and I are both on.
Right.
And I believe we decided how uh selectively. Didn't make sense to do what they're trying to do monetarily. Trying to put the field up in the back, which was problematic based on the topography. So I'm slightly concerned that they're pushing forward with it after we decided it didn't make sense.
Hmm.
Um also on here, they don't say the total cost of the project.
The total cost for construction, although this is preliminary because it won't be fully. Um. Costed is a word, costed out, uh I believe until later this spring. So it's not going to be in this round of capital projects that will be looked at this later this fall into. Uh this spring for the budget uh approval, it's gonna be in next year's.
November.
Correct.
Great idea, I vote no.
So I I don't I don't think it's uh the school committee, nor I think that group was advisory that was back in twenty seventeen, you're correct.
We were on.
Yeah, it but I don't think it's.
Well, of course, it's advisory, I mean, it's up to the council to do what they want.
Correct.
But it was so. It's at seven point five million dollars for two soccer fields. I vote. Anyway, but.
I think the question, though, that they're asking is just it, would it be, would the school committee approve? Uh moving the land from the nineteen acres from school designated for school purposes to being. Back to designated as park. That doesn't prohibit questions.
I just have a question because I'm looking at the map and I don't know why I didn't notice this before, how then if it's. I think I'm.
The place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should have come to us.
Just noticed that, I see the baseball fields and I'm like, wait a minute, that means that's the parking lot and then that's the structure. That's technically on school grounds. Dog park, notice that. Hit again?
The dog park originally came to us because they were looking to put it in the school purposes area.
I mean, it's playground, it's. You know, I just.
Dry spot is actually.
I just hadn't noticed that before.
A lot of wetlands in the school.
Yeah, the dry spot is where the proposed dog park is and then over by the place gate, now there's access by that place gate. For potentially a building could go there, because there's access here. And a building go in here.
So then the image that follows that, the final concept image.
Mm-hmm.
That actually describes those pieces, so that, is that what that really means that these areas that are deemed wetlands? Are they able to be developed or are they? Wetlanded therefore.
They're, yeah, they're they're actually outside of the where they're gonna actually do renovation, they would be putting in, I think, the most would be that walking. Trail through there.
Okay.
Um but they're not putting fields or parking lots or.
But I think I'm asking more for our purposes.
Oh, yes, that's what I'm saying.
It's wetland.
Dry spot is over by the place gate.
Yeah.
And the dry spot is over by the post dog park, so.
The vast majority.
Is wetland.
Is wetland.
According to this.
According to that, which would ultimately mean we could not.
Build.
No, you could build in both the spot by the place gate.
The vast majority of that.
Not in the whole nineteen acres, correct.
So I understand what this mention means.
And they will have um as part of their continued evaluation engineers, actually, I think they may have engineers out there now to. Fully determine, you know, if any of this. Topography designation changes from and to other area or if more becomes wetland.
It's strange to me that the town would designate nineteen acres mostly wet. And and I'm wondering why it's wet if it's so high up, because if the topography.
You can see there, you can see the underground stream that.
Yeah, but that's in the middle, there's a fifty-foot buffer. So why does it go all the way over? I don't know, I was gonna walk it, I haven't walked the.
This was given to us in nineteen fifty-eight, right?
No, that's just.
The land.
This information, oh, the land.
Yeah, but it shouldn't change.
I'm just saying, it was nineteen fifty-eight when they gave us that section.
If they designate.
Yeah.
I mean, wet, though, usually wet doesn't change, wet changes based on other things, changes.
And then am I missing a spot in here where there's certain. There's certain structures here, like a community center. Right, my understanding that correctly on this page?
That's, these are things that are gonna develop.
Right, but am I missing like a description of what would be housed in that?
And this is all, this is all the information that they provided.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's seven and a half million dollars that they want to put on the ballot uh in November against our high school.
No, I get that part.
Wouldn't be.
This is not.
It was next November.
No, what I said was, it's not going to be discussed as a capital project until next fall for. So that would be the spring of twenty-four.
Oh.
And that budget, but wouldn't be against our project.
And that's not the big service clause with all the. That's different.
Say again.
No, that's different. I know what you're talking about.
So this this is something that's not um, it's not making. Uh it into the capital projects being discussed this fall for approval in the final budget.
Yeah.
This spring of twenty-three, which means that in the, as we get into capital planning, which we're doing for this fall. Um in this agenda. You're not gonna be in discussing this project for with full costs and all of the information until. Next fall for spring of twenty-four, which means it's not going out to bid, it's not going uh until much later. So the.
So I I'm just saying, so we went through this whole process, Gordon, how many meetings? So I, I'm just saying, so we went through this whole process, Gordon. How many meetings we have? Five, six, seven, eight? And we looked at it as crazy talk, because literally, what was the thought? No, we did, because we looked at two fields for seven million dollars. It was lunacy.
But that's really none of our business. I don't think that we are.
None of our business.
Not.
Control over it.
I know we do, but.
And they brought us in originally for it.
I get it, but it's not good, it's not good optics for the school committee to stand in the way of something like this that could be for the betterment of the town.
It's not for the betterment.
It's not, it's not just about optics. This is.
No, you're right.
And it's not a good look.
And you have support from other groups around our.
I think that's.
No, but we looked at this specifically, and we were in it, right? We were in it, Gordon. And we just.
They had asked.
Didn't make any sense whatsoever because of the topography. So I'm worried that it's not gonna make sense once they get into it again, because once they look at the topography and decide how are we gonna have people hike up a mountain to go to a soccer game? It just doesn't make sense.
That's not an option. Let them figure it out. Like, I mean, they'll.
No, it's my tax dollars. If they're gonna spend seven point five million dollars after we spent a hundred and whatever on a high school, that's all.
Yeah, that's.
So I, we do have control, because I gotta vote to say whether.
I know we have control, but I don't necessarily agree that it's within our I don't necessarily think it's the right thing to do, to stand in their way when this is a project they're trying to move forward with.
I, I understand that.
But is there ways to potentially overlap these projects was my, was where I was trying to go with that question. Like, if we see.
With our building?
Like, well, a new community center, what's to be housed instead? Like, if that's something that they're trying to put, but that's my point. Like, if they're trying to build structures like that.
Right.
And we're trying to build structures like that. Greg's point around tax dollars, that seems rather redundant to each be building a structure that could potentially house the same types of.
Well, I don't think we'd put IT or LCAT there.
No, we might put a pool. That makes sense. That makes.
We're not, the, the pool's not in the seven point five million dollars.
Now, but I'm saying.
We won't, why would we, why would we spend ten million dollars on a pool at Heritage Park and not put it on the high school campus?
If it, if it moves to project.
Ten million dollars, ten million dollars. Town's gonna approve ten million this way or that way. And I would put it on the high school grounds before I put it there.
I would too.
And that's a big structure, too.
Maybe that's just, this is just a place to start some more conversations with other, with others, you know?
Nobody's gonna see me. Oh, we know that. No, that was just Sarah's idea.
I'm just saying, or spending money in two different locations. If there's ways to overlap some of the objectives of both groups.
Yeah.
I feel like that's a missed opportunity, and we do have a say in that conversation, rather than operating in silos. Like, that's foolish.
We're not gonna put LCAT there. We're not gonna put IT there. So what else would we put there, Sarah?
Just to offer, uh, if I may.
Yeah.
Sorry, through the chair. You, you have time in both projects that if you look at just what's being requested, and you know, you ultimately vote on that, you still have time, and that's simply to designate the, the um, land, the nineteen acres back to park. We're still, as a building committee, discussing what, what do the options entail? So, and although it's not one that has gained a lot of traction, the idea of a community building at one point did have some thought around, do you provide more space to rec?
Right, but that would be here.
Correct.
That's the.
Which within.
Part of our cell.
Which then would, correct.
So be less there, you mean?
Correct. I see what you're saying. So, so both projects are evolving. Um, one probably gonna be the building, the school building project more rapidly than this one. And so, yes, there can be discussion going forth around both, because you have a lot of individuals who are on both committees, or at least involved in both projects. You know, just something to think about. So I don't, I, your point is a very good one. And, and I'm not sure that it's, it's in any way diminished by voting tonight around you know, designating the land one way or the other.
And was there a request made or an invitation extended to have anyone who's representative of this project be in attendance at our meeting?
Um, I didn't put a invite, I had asked and tried to follow up on all the questions you had, but I didn't specifically invite. I certainly can.
Have. The chair, the vice chair, you met with that group? I, I just have, it's, it's almost twenty acres of land, like, to be asked to give that up without having a conversation with anyone who's charged with leading that program or that design. It's challenging for me. Like, I wouldn't just turn things over.
Right.
Without having a conversation and hearing the vision, rather than you know, documents from nineteen fifty-eight. Like, that's, to me, is part of the missing link here is we have not, I have not, I didn't know if any of you had, communication with anyone who's representative of this project.
The discussion that I've had have been with Bruce Fenny, who is doing a lot of the background work, working with the the engineers and the design firm. Um, as well as originally with Mary McNally, who put in the original request to put the agenda item on. Um, certainly, if people would like me to invite, um, Mary McNally, Bruce, Donna Prather, that would probably be the group that would have the most knowledge about this, um, this project.
That's just a thought. Like, we're, we're trying to operate and make a substantial decision based off of a packet, a packet that isn't necessarily complete in some ways, because some of it stretches back to two thousand sixteen, some stretches back to nineteen fifty-eight. So we're trying to piece together someone else's proposal absent of the other individual. So I do think, like, if we're gonna take a formal vote, I would prefer to do so having had conversations with those individuals. So we have a clear understanding of what their vision is, and they have an understanding of what our reservations are. Potential reservations, I'm thinking myself.
I think that would be helpful.
Is there a deadline? Are they under the?
They, no, they, um, when no action was taken, uh, back in September, um, they missed that first window, so they have time now to put in for the, the, the real um, motivation for sort of the expedited discussion was around putting in for the park grant.
Okay.
So now they have an opportunity to do so.
At a different time.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of, it's not here. I'm, I'm totally comfortable if it's the chair, the vice chair, and Gordon as representatives of our committee. I just think some conversation needs to happen between our two boards or our two organizations, to make sure that we're not crossing wires, because I don't want to see us duplicate efforts or any of that, if we can somehow come to consensus around the goals of the two projects. That's it. That's my two cents.
The voice of reason. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Or move on?
Would you, so I'm assuming we're tabling it, and you would like me to invite for the next meeting?
Uh, we'll make a plan in the. That's okay, Liz. And I don't mean to diminish progress in this town, because we need things in this town.
Agreed.
But I specifically sat through several meetings where we decided that being soccer fields up on a mountain made zero sense. So I'm seven point five million dollars behind our school, even if it's not at the same time. I, I would, I would have trouble passing a seven million dollar, uh, warrant article the year after we passed our high school. It's problematic. We spend a million dollars in capital every year. Say seven on a oh, I don't know, but we could find more. It's worth it.
Your diligence.
That's right. Okay. Capital planning for FY twenty-four.
Okay. Best in segment.
Let's spend more money. You don't have.
So, uh, the, the, in your packet, you have, um, two documents. The first one is really an update on where we are from capital planning last year, going into this year. And so, um, the green highlights, uh, you see project, excuse me, projects that were approved through our budget, uh, town budget last year. So in the spring of last year, they approved, if you look, um, to replace the roof membrane that's over what we've been freshman wing. Uh, that's an area of the high school roof that has a different membrane than the rest of the high school roof. And that, um, right now is in progress. Uh, that was not as easily accomplished as one had originally thought, or a group of us had originally thought back when we were putting this project together. And so we are working with tie and bond to try to make that happen in some way, shape, or form. Certainly, cost escalation has not helped us, but, um, the engineering group should, uh, give us hopefully some good ideas to make some progress on that. Um, Meadowbrook, we, it was approved to add lights to parking lot. That was completed just recently. And so, um, people are quite excited, uh, one being Ms. Lodi, who, uh, often is there when, and certainly now with daylight savings gone, um, is often walking out in, uh, the dark of night, and the new lights are fantastic. Uh, the Mountain View Gymnasium floor was replaced. That was done and accomplished, uh, by August of this year. So we did open the school year with a new gym floor there, and, um, they are utilizing it. And, um, been approved, but has not happened yet. Uh, this would be the full repaving of the parking lot at Maple Shade and, um, paving of the playground, blacktop area. And originally, if you think way back, had included, um, basketball hoops and so forth, but over time, we were able to get certain basketball hoops replaced individually, and so that part was taken care of. It's not really getting the new pavement down, but also taking care of some drainage issues that really are caused by, um, the hillside that is just off that parking lot and the front parking lot at Maple Shade. So when you have, um, a decent amount of snow cover on the ground, and then there's some thaw, and then you have melting, and then overnight it freezes, it's challenging to stay ahead of the icing that takes place, and often it is black ice, so you can't see it. Um, and so people have unfortunately fallen, and even with, um, our custodians, as well as DPW, you know, going around and salting and so forth, uh, that's been challenging. And so the project is hopefully to not only do repaving, but also help us with that drainage piece so that, uh, we're not getting that same kind of icing.
Um, there's no way to do that for less, Gordon. I know that's a rhetorical question to some extent, but to my prior point about a million dollars in the capital allotment annually, there's no way we're ever gonna fund a million dollars for a parking lot. Are we?
Uh, it's not, not a million dollars, a hundred and forty-two thousand.
It's in the green stuff.
I'm in the green.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was moving that answer. But I'm on the flat roof.
Uh, but also that, that number's come down.
Under a million?
Yeah, I'm gone. Okay, I'll go faster. He's with me. Um, and then, uh, the repair of skylights and domes, that's happening. So we have twenty-two thousand dollars there where uh, we can utilize purchasing new domes and sealing, uh, you know, resealing, um, or replacing and sealing new domes, uh, and hopefully making different areas of the high school where we have had, uh, leaking problems better while we await project. Um, items that did not get picked up were the replacement of the flat roof at Maple Shade, but that's as we go to the capital planning document. That's number one on Maple Shade's list this year. Um, renovation of the parking lot, as you were just mentioning, Mr. Thompson, um, that's still something that they'd like to see happen, not only for, um, but the number has come down.
But they're never gonna happen, which is unfortunate, because we need them to happen. How do we, how do we get there?
Well, uh, in three million dollars. At the, in that, traditionally, they've designated about one point two, one point four million in the operational budget, but that's not to say that when they've bonded, they haven't gone well beyond in terms of, um, the amount of money that they're willing to spend, which if, if you remember last couple of years, they've had, um, before they did it with ARPA money, they've had projects that would be covered by the operational capital budget, and then projects that would be done under bonding, and that has gone well beyond the one point two million. And so as long as they're, we continue to balance, you know, the ability to bond, which, uh, I think they will, and um, as well as having some capital money in each budget, hopefully we can get it, larger ticket items accomplished. So I will shift gears, um, to, unless there are questions around the ones that were approved and sort of going.
Just had a question about the cafeteria tables at the high school?
Yeah, so that one, we've, we've taken off, because we started to whittle away over the last few years at, okay, what are, what's the need right now? Accomplish what's needed in terms of getting through lunches, making sure that certain things are happening, and especially now that we've gotten into such close work with the design team, we really need to learn more about, okay, what type of furniture might be recommended, you know, for these spaces as we've outlined the educational plan. Also, MSBA, uh, I have to give them a ton of credit. They're coming up with many different ways to look at purchasing furniture and maybe going in on other groups that are in projects.
Okay.
So they are purchasing together, and so withdrawing that project and, um, looking at it differently down the road, I think is gonna be helpful.
And there was also some renovations done based on, wasn't Project Lead the Way, didn't the cafeteria get support through the grants?
Uh, actually, uh, Lori Paul had, had a renovation grant that she.
Okay. Cause I knew we had done something around the cafeteria.
So we got, we got the, um,
Painting, some.
The side, uh.
But not to the science grant, just.
And.
Yeah.
You had painting, um, you had some of the side tables or counters in.
Yeah, the high top tables with the chart.
There were some, some high top tables, yep, they took out the bookshelves, and so there was a little bit of renovation. Um, a little bit, yeah. As soon as Molly's looking there skeptical. Renovation, yeah, yeah.
It's better than it was.
Okay.
Not to the level of a new building or a new. But yes, some.
Yeah, improved upon, at least during my tenure here. That's why I was confused when I saw tapes.
And that's all, that's all I'm trying to, so going forward, um, looking at this document. Um, and this goes by building, so Meadow, Meadowbrook, uh, in working with DPW and looking at, okay, what, what are some of the real needs now that we have lighting? The biggest thing that they need is parking and better circulation. And so really, that number has come down considerably from what, um, was originally estimated through work with tie and bond to looking at, if DPW does a lot of this work and moves the traffic islands and moves that green area out, and then makes it workable, um, parking spaces, and then gives us a better traffic pattern, if you will. Um, we can, I think we can accomplish this for around two hundred and forty-four thousand. So.
How many net spots in the idea?
I'm sorry?
We're gonna get more additional parking spot?
Um, we will get a number of additional parking spots. I don't have the exact.
Okay.
But I do know that, um, both Mrs. Lodi and, uh, Mrs. Shay were involved in that discussion with Mr. Fenny and, uh, now Mr. Roy, who has taken, uh, Mr. Dunn's place, uh, when he left this summer. So they, they redesigned that, so that's been endorsed and is, um, their new plan. Which comes down considerably from that number from last year. Um, however, as you look at Maple Shades, um, yeah, that one.
Gordon, back to Meadowbrook.
Sure.
Before you jump.
Yeah, yeah.
Number three, that's new. I've never seen that before, right?
Which one? Uh, air conditioning, no, that's been on there. It's just, uh, we've actually put. Um, that, that goes back way to the, um, twenty thirteen facility study, when they were looking at all the buildings. Um, they, you know, they saw a, a lot of the um, inefficient mits that were windows. And so they're like, well, if you're really gonna do that, and you want, you know, they weren't disagreeing that bringing air conditioning to buildings is a good idea, that you really should do rooftop units. Um, now with, uh, a new roof on Meadowbrook, how we do that with warranties and so forth will be tricky. Um, you know, it's one, uh, just, uh, full disclosure. I know that, uh, not only know, I know I've been in the discussion, um, you know, that there are solar energy companies who are, are really pushing um, the Department of Public Works around, uh, looking at our buildings for solar and specifically Meadowbrook. And, and I got into the discussion and said, you know, the, um, Mass School Building Authority contributed, uh, Mass School Building Authority contributed, uh, over seven hundred thousand to this roof. I, you know, I, I know that that's going to be an interesting discussion where we to go down the road of any kind of solar project.
Hmm.
Um, and all of that discussion would need to come here. Read it, especially by the Solar Energy Company, uh, with incredible praise, uh, cause I was the wet blanket who, who put a hold on it.
Didn't we approve brown mounted solar in this town? Isn't that new?
Uh, that I don't know. This is just specific to Meadowbrook.
Yeah.
And, um, so anyway, those discussions have somewhat gone on, uh, throughout the fall and, and looking at, because, you know, they're looking for ways to bring down utility costs, which makes a lot of sense. I'm just not sure that, um, we want to do it by putting, uh, something that would go on a new roof at Meadowbrook.
Hmm.
Um, so anyway, that's, um, I lost my train of thought there, but, uh,
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning. Thank you. So that was, uh, so there's this, that, that's a, a price that, um, is, has been updated since, uh, the facility study. But that's out.
Yes.
A number of years.
Mm-hmm.
And they do have with the windows and doors, one thing I do have to say, the windows and doors project allowed us to put in more efficient air conditioning units in Meadowbrook's rooms and all of them were, um, the same dimensions and the same air conditioning units. And we updated at that point when we did the windows and doors project.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Moving on. Um, the unfortunate, uh, the, there is, as you all know, because all of you, uh, live with household budgets, uh, as well. Um, there's a lot of price escalation going on. So, uh, our roof project from last year to this year, uh, to replace the flat sections of Maple Shade has gone up considerably. And so the two point seven million is something that's, um, now come through not only an engineering group, but, um, also in working with a company. Um, and so that's something that needs to be done. As, as you remember, back in twenty eleven, the two, um, roofs, uh, that are over the gymnasium and over the cafeteria were replaced and they were replaced because they, uh, well, one was starting to fail. And they are a little bit of a different structure because they have those beams, um, inside or arches side, um, that are wooden and those were replaced to make sure that they now can handle snow loads well into the future. Um, so those are replaced and then it's the remaining piece, uh, flat roofs that need to be replaced. So that price is, has just been updated. Um, next step for Mountain View. And again, these interior renovations, these came out of the facility study. Uh, and if, and as you remember, the facility study looked at what would keep buildings viable, but also looked at it from a standpoint of safety and security. And so if you think of, of Mountain View, um, and Meadowbrook, as you walk into their building, once someone gets by, um, that camera that's on the outside, there is a blind spot. They lose you for, for a moment in time where you're starting to go up the corridor. Now granted, as I say that, every one of our buildings is locked and does have camera and intercom so that there is someone checking and discussing and making a determination as to whether you come into the building or not. Now, at Meadowbrook, actually they get two shots out of it because with the, um, windows and doors project, there's a vestibule. So you have, you have to go through the process of buzzing in once from the outside and you enter and you're still in a locked area and you have to buzz again.
Hmm.
So it gives you a chance in case, you know, building offices get busy. And so if there was any, any, um, situation where someone was buzzed in and we decided, hmm, maybe not, then it's still locked at Meadowbrook. Um, anyway, so that's where that office renovation is coming from is reconfiguring the office and that staff room at Mountain View and, um, shifting that. So you would have the office closer to the front door. And then the second project there um, is looking at, yes, the AC unit, but that again was something that was placed on in the facility study from really in all the buildings. I think if you were to ask, um, DPW, they're really looking at the electrical upgrade, uh, because all of our buildings were upgraded at some point between twenty-ten and now, with the exception of Mountain View.
Oh, wow.
So that's, yeah, it's a, it's a high ticket price. So maybe you separate out the electrical upgrade, don't do the rooftop units, but, um, uh, from a safety standpoint, the office renovation is the number one.
So if we took out the rooftop, we have probably a hundred and a half, that wouldn't happen.
Um, I would have to look at that in terms of
Because the, the Meadowbrook are one point three. Mountain View is similar in size.
How come?
Meadowbrook's bigger. Yeah.
How, how come sometimes we can put things forward to accelerated repair? Like are these items eligible to go in?
Windows, doors, corridors and roofs. However, accelerated repair was just paused by the MSBA, um, just last week. And
Okay.
One of the reasons is because they're looking at possibly, if I read the memo correctly, utilizing the funding to help offset the districts who are currently sitting in a situation where their budgets were set and then price escalation happened and the project's going.
True.
Um, so they froze accelerated repair, which obviously um, frustrates a number of folks who maybe just were approved to come into accelerated repair, but maybe not as many folks as who are in the core program sitting in a project.
Project that isn't fully funded.
So the MSBA, I give them credit, is trying to be proactive and do what they can to deal with the, some of the funding issues. Um, far as I understand it, the, the bigger piece really is the, the legislature would have to act and then help them increase amount of money that's, um, given to the MSBA as part of the budget each year.
And then have we ever explored grants that are specific to school safety outside of just Massachusetts-based grants? Like, I feel like school safety is a topic of national concern. Like are there grants that are competitive in nature that we might be able to seek out to offset some of these?
So we haven't done extensive research on that. The, the few grants that I've seen don't generally rise to these type of numbers.
Okay.
Um, but I mean, we certainly can look at, look at that. Um, sometimes in discussion as we discuss these things and we're working with the police department, they may come across grants. Uh, the unfortunate thing is we haven't seen grants that rise to this.
Okay.
Um,
But even
One thing that Yeah, no, I mean, one thing that, uh, you know, as we continue down, if you're looking at the sheet and you go to page two, you know, looking at community preservation for the replacement of the synthetic turf, that would be something that we should think about. Um, because that I, I have seen other, um, school districts do that in their town. Um, and as, because turfs have to be, synthetic turf has to be replaced at some point. And it, it is both school department and department chiefs. Just in terms of
Or, yeah.
Uh, then the, the one I missed in there was, um, Berksland Park last year, uh, brought forward the, um, replacement of the ballasted flat roof and, um, that, uh, that price has been updated, uh, and so it's three hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay, no problem. Twenty-three million dollars.
And when does this need to be back in its final version to you?
Um, so within the, hopefully in the month of November, if we can finalize or prioritize, as we've done in the past projects that, um, the order that you'd like me to present them to the town, that would be helpful. And if, uh, between now and the next meeting, you'd like me to get some more specific information, I certainly can do that. Such as breaking apart the electrical upgrade versus the, uh, rooftop unit.
I think that's more of a realistic objective.
Mm-hmm. And finding out the number of parking spots that would be gained at, correct? Wasn't that your question?
Yep.
But encouraging that the membrane's come down so much. I can say the DPW.
And hopefully with the sidewalks, that might actually support kids walking or biking as down on
On car lines.
You look great.
Yeah, they're coming along the, the sidewalks.
Yes, yeah. That is huge.
Yeah.
Walking, uh, watching a lot of it happen.
People are walking on the
Hyannis, uh, pretty cool. Walking in the writings.
Okay, so we'll bring that back next meeting probably.
I'll bring that, this
We'll talk about order and such.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, finally on our agenda, we have the approval of a vocal music department New York group for the specials.
Yes. So this is an out of state trip through New York City. Uh, you see in your packet, a cover letter from Mr. Page who, um, approving this trip and this would be, uh, his board, uh, overseeing the trip along with, um, other chaperones. Um, probably ninety students going, uh, and it would be a trip to not only see the matinee of Sweeney Todd, a performance of Sweeney Todd, but also attending a workshop that they would get, um, roughly hour and a half workshop where they would, um, get an idea of how, uh, you know, a musical cast is put together, how performances are put together, what goes into, um, not only your daily preparation, but, um, long-term preparation and so forth. And then after they have that opportunity, they can be in the audience, uh, viewing a performance.
Great. Ninety students, huh?
I think that's the max. I don't know if they'll get ninety.
Right.
But that's the projection.
Questions?
Person go.
Oh, God.
They have room for ninety.
Questions or discussions? I would entertain.
I moved, moved the vocal music department New York trip.
And made by Ansel.
Okay.
Second by Sarah, this question. All them favorites say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed name that carries towards zero. Anything else? Anything at all? Nothing. You're ready to go. All I've seen a motion for adjournments. Motion made by Sarah. It'll be an Ansel, I don't want to leave.
They want to say aye.
Second by Amy. Discussion, all of her, please say aye. Aye, opposed name, which carries toward the zero. We are adjourned. You was nice.
You, thank you.